Hi, everybody. Six thirty, and I'm going to call the special meeting of the Willits City Council's order. We'll start out with a pledge to the flag. God, would you like to lead us in the pledge tonight?
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Delores, could we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Strong.
Here.
Present.
Yes.
That's all.
Present.
And Mayor. Yes, thank you. All right, we'll open with public communication. If anybody from the public would like to speak to the council, this is your chance. I don't see anyone here who would like to speak to us tonight, so we're going to skip that and move on to review of the 2021 adopted goals. On April 26th of 2021, the city council adopted strategic goals, which form the basis of a work plan to assist with the decision-making process and allocation of city resources. The council will use this session tonight to review the performance, the organization's performance towards achieving those goals.
Thank you. So, I am glad that the council can accommodate a special meeting. I think it's a very important telling and set the tone for the year that is approaching us and that we already entered in 2023. As you recall, and it's noted, that these goals were hammered out, developed, refined, and ultimately adopted by the council back in 2021. So, we're approaching nearly two years working with these goals. And I just want to make it very clear, since that time of April 2020, '21, that we at staff level have used these goals as much as we could. And it was a big help when we were putting together the draft budget. This was the first time we were able to put a budget or utilize a budget that we were even not rushing against the eleventh hour to have a budget. It was a budget that also was able to be comprised, knowing that we had goals and projects that the council had communicated to us that you thought was important. These goals have not been locked away, and we bring them out on special occasions and just use them when, you know, like good china, you know, we only use them when the good in-laws or someone are present. We use them on a daily basis. They helped, like I said, refine the budgeting process. They were instrumental in the capital improvement plan creation. Those two documents are linked, and they are physically linked. And that was the one thing we accomplished with that process under Manny and then with Scott and Andrea with the CIP component as well. Council asked to have this session tonight. This is kind of a check-in to see where we are. And we don't want to hide anything. Like I said, we are operating under these principles that you have put forward. And I just wanted to have the opportunity, if we can go through this list incrementally, there's any items that are there. Is there items that, you know, you were hoping for more progress on, maybe things that, you know, didn't happen? I'll be very honest and very forthright. A lot of the ones that you will see that says continuous and ongoing, those are the ones that, honestly, I haven't been able to figure out a good plan to implement, either because we don't have the staff, we haven't figured out how we weave that into our daily activities or current programs. So, that, you know, those are, like I said, my intent here is to be very clear. I could have layered this in saying we are making immense progress across all fronts. We're knocking them down, we're moving forward, but that wouldn't be realistic. And I don't think you would recognize that very clearly. We have done some amazing things in the last year and a half to two, and there's still a lot of things that we need to do. Some of these goals are, my approach to this was that, when you did this back in 2021, that this was a three, you know, a good three-year plan. That tied to my contract, I think, and I treated it that way. And at this point, I think we're looking at it, some of these items may be a five- or six-year, just because we have to figure out how we're going to incorporate them, how, you know, what resources are we going to allocate to that process? And I just want to make that clear to the council tonight. So, the second phase of this project, or tonight's session, is going to be looking at projects that have been proposed, programmed. They're kind of in the incubation stage, some of them, and these are projects that are related to capital improvements that would extend through this fiscal year and will into the next fiscal year. And these are things we wanted to basically highlight, to make sure that we're meeting your expectations on significant capital improvement projects for the city. So, from that point, we have staff here, we have department heads that can answer any questions. And there were some things, I had a discussion with Andrea this afternoon regarding preservation, pavement preservation, and how we can potentially fund that, because I know that is a critical issue, and that's something that, you know, this is one of those examples that Public Works and Engineering would oversee, but it's tied back to how Manning would process financing and how we utilize external funding that comes into the city for those projects. So, from that point, from that opening comments, I will answer any questions, and like I said, how you want to proceed, we go from there.
Okay.
I would just rather just start going through these and just get a recap, then move on, and then if there are any questions, if anybody else.
I guess I would just like to ask, are there any, so, when we created our goals back in 2021, they were broken down into basically different wings of the city? And I just wonder if any of the council members feel that any of these have been maybe not as forward in the priorities as you would have wished? Is there anybody who feels that a particular priority that we set hasn't been at least partially tackled and wishes that it would move higher in the list? Larry?
The thing that we told the public about the trees and the reworking of Main Street, we have not accomplished because there has not been another, to my knowledge, and correct me if I'm wrong, there has not been another meeting, a group meeting from the city, saying, what do we need to do to finish this up, or are we at where we need to be, or whatever? We have not had that meeting, to my knowledge. The next thing that bothers me is, it says "adopt a balanced budget." And I don't know how anybody in the city can say that we want to make it a balanced budget, because the economy in this town is way, way down. And whether you know it or not, that's the way it is. And I've talked to people that are hanging on by a shoestring because they don't have any people that are coming in. The last thing I want to say is, we lost a really big business in this town this year, and that was Peterson Tire, Peterson Implants. They sold caterpillars. I know one salesman that his average is $2 million, and he sells in a year, so that's taxable. And I just think that we're not saying anything. And I went to the boss of Peterson after I finally heard that they were leaving, and they hadn't bought the property where they bought it yet, and said, has anybody from the city been out to talk to you, saying, how can we help you stay in Willits? Because you're a good batch of people, and we want your tax base. And he said that I was the only one that has ever mentioned that. Out of the entire staff or people in the community, I was the only one that ever said that. And this was the boss, so he should know. And I'm just, I'm amazed. That's into my spiel today.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I go now? Okay. I, we have, we set many goals, and there were lots of different subcategories under each goal. And looking back on the goals, I felt like the things that were most important to the infrastructure that created health in the organization to be able to accomplish many of the goals in there, that there was more, I felt like the priorities were addressed first. And in seeing those, although everything wasn't addressed, the most important things were, and I see that they are going to give us the ability to continue to move forward on our goals and work more on some of the others. There were some things that I did note that I'd like to see become a focus, but I don't feel that they should have taken priority thus far. I feel like we're moving forward in the order that we should. So, I understand where Larry's coming from in terms of business being down, but also our revenue comes from, you know, property taxes as well as sales tax. And making the goal of helping to support business in the area a higher priority for 2023 is definitely something I would support, because as a business owner, I do see it, I feel it as well. And it's going to take some creativity for all of us to survive in this economy. But, yeah, I mean, part of that's on us as entrepreneurs and business owners, and certainly we need support from the city, but we can't rely solely on the city either. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Madge?
I kind of agree with what Sabrina was just saying. We can't do everything all at once, and very important structural staffing issues were critical before you could move ahead on all the different projects. And I think we've been working quite well, and I'm really impressed with how many of the goals and tasks under each category of goals have, how much has been accomplished. And I do think that is setting us up to continue moving forward on the ones that we haven't gotten to yet. So, I feel very encouraged about that. There was one place, which, you know, if we go through item by item, there was one place that I felt I wanted a little more detail, but in general, the feedback, the fact that these are living goals, these aren't just something to put on a shelf and then come back two years later and say, oh, you know, but we're working on it. So, I think we have really a great team of staff, and I think even though the economy out there is really rough, and our businesses are suffering from it, that we are staying afloat, that we are pretty close to balancing our budget if we're not already being balanced, but I think we are. And part of that is Measure K has been very helpful. But I agree also that if there's some way that the city can partner with and offer some additional help to our businesses, that it is, you know, we're the public sector, and the business is the private sector, so there's only so much we can do. I think we're on a pretty good trajectory here. I really want to thank Brian and all of the senior staff people for steering our ship so well. Do I mention the one area that I wanted a little more? I talked to Brian about it yesterday, which was the trying to be an environmental and carbon-neutral leader, trying to have the city Willits doing its part to reduce our carbon footprint. I just wanted it spelled out a little bit more, sort of what the wish list is, and like in many other cases, there's specific projects, and some of them we've gotten to and some of them we haven't, but what was reported here was a little too cryptic. It didn't really go into that. And I think it's really helpful to have that list and then keep working on it. So, and year by year, you know, as we did with buying the solar array at the water treatment plant, we can see that it actually pays off, and we can see we're actually saving money by reducing our energy usage. So, that's what I wanted to have spelled out a little bit.
And Madge and I spoke yesterday, and basically I gave a knowledge, I did short-change that. There has been measured approach. I wouldn't say we did everything we wanted to. This is one of those goals that, it's kind of a rainy day project, how we can allocate staff. So, just to put it out there, you know, we are working to implement the solar arrays on this building. You know, we put the Tesla battery backup system at the water treatment plant. Scott noted that prior to the adoption of the, these goals back in 1819, the city went and did a comprehensive swap-out of energy-efficient light fixtures and bulbs. So, that was done, and that's something we do, make sure we replace fixture, we look for the highest energy rating. I had several conversations with vendors and consultants who would be willing to help with us on energy plans and renewable systems, and a lot of them I do direct to Andrea. She probably regrets that, but we do get a lot of calls and a lot of inquiries. And like I said, it's just something, it doesn't fit nicely into any other program we do. It doesn't fit into, you know, streets, it doesn't fit in the water distribution, it doesn't fit in processing. And like I said, that's something that we need to carve out an area within our staffing and program to figure out how we can accommodate that. This past year, and I, Scott and I were talking about it, I said, oh, let me think about, back through, this past year, Andrea, or last summer, oversaw the maintenance, kind of de-cleaning the trees and limbs up at the solar arrays up at the water treatment plant. So, once again, we're making not only a philosophical commitment, but we're also maintaining the facilities that we have and trying to enhance them. So, yes, I did admit that the wording in there got short-changed, but there has been a focus, and it has not elapsed, that we need to follow through on it.
I think I definitely agree with Madge. That was a section that I felt like was a little sparse in the details. I think one of the things that we've talked about in the past, and years ago, Andrea, I think you were involved with Suzanne, putting together kind of almost an energy audit of the city. And I think something that I would like to see happen is, while maybe some of these environmental goals don't fit neatly into specific departments, in my dream world, environmental concerns would be first and foremost in every department in all of the work that's programmed. So, it would be one of the, right up there with economic responsibility, you know, fiscal responsibility would be environmental responsibility, and making sure that the choices that we make across the board, not just lighting, but tree maintenance and road maintenance and purchasing vehicles, all of those things, that environmental value is up there right along with fiscal value.
I totally agree. The point I just want to make is, it's a paradigm shift.
Yeah.
They don't happen overnight.
Right.
So...
But like Madge was saying, to have it written out, to have it spelled out, then we all know we're moving towards that.
Hey, it's a paradigm shift for myself as well, with that emphasis, and how do we make that happen? Some of these things are, we can accomplish them relatively straightforward. It's just refining what we do. This one is, okay, we have to get our head around, how are we going to do that? How are we going to introduce items? How are we going to program projects? And also look at the renewable energy component, the environmental component.
Well, I was just thinking about, along that lines, about things that just become more natural. And like, when you, when we took down the tree, you didn't think about the environmental impact and how, you know, how that was good for the environment, and the fact that you took the, you took the tree and you used it for countertops and you used it for a bench. So, there are some ways that maybe we don't even think about, that we are being environmentally, you know, aware when we're doing things, even though we haven't written it maybe on paper. There is some mindset change, I think, that is taking place in little ways.
And just building on, and building on that, we had, we had, and we currently have, and we continue to, you know, looking at alternative options on projects, you know, like I said earlier, we can't keep building ourselves out of problems. Sometimes we have to be, let something go, and that's a environmental component as well, not to put in pavement on top of pavement. Maybe there's other measures we can do that, other improprious services, or improprious service that allows drainage. How can we incorporate drainage components into designs? Small things like that, we're getting there. Like I said, it's paradigm shift, it adds a level of, an element to project design that maybe wasn't at the forefront in the past, but we are recognizing it's important.
And I think, for me personally, I just would like to somehow see that codified, so that that doesn't become a less, it doesn't fall by the wayside when there's a change in council or a change in staff who don't feel that way. That down the road, we don't revert back to a less conscious pattern. Jerry?
I guess I, kind of a recap, when I first got on the council, I really wanted to do something more for business, I mean, Larry's talking about, but I guess where I was butting my head a lot of times when doing Revite Ed was, we always came back to, we have no money for this, we have this, or our system's broken, or we don't have any staff, or, I, honestly, I was getting really frustrated and thought about not running the second time, because I kind of felt, and that was the reason I supported Measure K and why I really support fixing our house, so to speak, before we can move on to do these things. And I don't expect that we're going to be running and hitting the ground like Santa Rosa. I was looking at the press release out of Yucaya today and looking at what they're doing and going, boy, I'd kind of like to move towards some of that stuff, but we're still fixing our house, so to speak, and getting ourselves on a solid financial ground. And, I mean, so I kind of wanted to kind of recognize that, that we've been in a fixed mode, and obviously we can chop away some of these things. I honestly don't think that, I'm not saying that what you're saying is wrong, because I think, yes, we codify it in some form, but I think the state's going to make sure that we stay on track with some of that. I think it's become, while it was something that was maybe a Pollyanna kind of thing in the era that I grew up in, now it's becoming embraced, not only by the youth, but Main Street, to be more environmentally conscious. I think it's a little more in-your-face to the average Joe. It's not just, I'm recycling my cans and calling it good. I think everybody's looking towards that. We obviously have to look at what we can afford, what we can do, what's practical. And I don't see us going totally electric. I don't think it's practical at the moment because of technology. I think it's going to move that way. But I think that when things go that, when we're going there. I just want to say, I want to see us continue to fix our house. I want to see us continue to concentrate on water security. I don't think that the drought has gone away. I think that, again, I think we've shown we could be good neighbors with the rest of our surrounding area here, but at the same time, get our waterhouse in order, get our infrastructure in order, and, yeah. And I guess I looked at one thing, and I do want to, at one point, look at our pension liability, so that we can at least have a plan, because it rears its ugly head, and we owe it to our employees, we owe it to our taxpayers, because what I hate is every so often, it becomes a political issue, and then everybody vilifies public employees. And to just have a plan in place, so that we can say, this is how we're dealing with it, because every time I hear that PERS is going to adjust the rate, we all go running, you know, screaming like, what are we going to do? The sky is falling. And I'd rather think about it ahead of time than wait, because I don't want our, us to think, everything's in order, we got this tax, and everything's good, all of a sudden, PERS starts knocking on our door, and then all of a sudden, we have to do some draconian measures and tear down our house or do something. So, I kind of want to think ahead on that, too.
Yeah, just on that note, soon as Manny arrived here, that was one of the first things I talked to him about. And once again, I hate to bring that A word up, it's audits, and the general, essentially get our financial house in order, then we can start looking at some long-term liability.
And that's why I haven't been harping, because I knew that we, you know, I knew we need a new financial system in place, we need to get those audits done, we need to figure out where we've been, so that we can kind of fix things going forward. And so, I'm glad that we're making progress there, because we can't do all the other things we want to do if, again, I look at my own house, if I don't know what's in the checkbook, I can't really go out and make a plan as to how I'm going to fix the house or something, so that's all.
So, just on that note, I'm sorry, I do have some suggestions and some ideas that I can look at, refining, you know, our energy and environmental policies and codifying, yes, we can make a resolution that basically, that requires us to check that box when we review plans. That's, you know, we can do that. And like I said, this is real helpful. You know, we've been moving on a broad front, now we're just kind of finalizing, or not finalizing, but refining.
Yeah, and I just want to make it clear, I'm not criticizing at all. I'm also very pleased with the progress that we've made, and I think that the...
No, no, I don't take it that way.
I think that the nuts and bolts of what has been accomplished in the last year and a half has just been essential and makes me feel so much better about the health of our city. I'm just saying, you know, in my dream world, we really do become an environmental model city, because that matters, and I think it matters to people in our community also.
No, honest assessment is the best thing. You're not, you know, I don't take anything, what you were saying tonight is, you know, negative, it's honest, and you have to write that up, or the opportunity to, you know, these are your goals. This is the plan that you adopted and you convey to the public, and it's our responsibility to implement it.
Yeah, and, again, maybe in our dream world, but I feel, I was really shocked to find out how much greenhouse gas is produced by cement and concrete. And I know also, I'm also shocked at how expensive street work is, and we have so much street work that needs to be done, our streets are in disrepair, and when you do it right, when you do everything, complete streets, it's just astonishingly expensive. So, I do want to at least explore if there are alternatives where maybe we don't need to have everything paved up to the same standard. Maybe we can have gravel pathways, or, I don't know. I mean, I just, I want to think outside the box a little bit on whether we need to invest quite so much money in quite so much greenhouse gas production in our infrastructure, especially streets. And there are some concrete alternatives, which probably are more expensive, but I want, I would like somehow, maybe I can do a little bit of research and point out some ways that we might be able to, in our own projects, and perhaps also in private sector projects that come to us with building permits, to reduce the amount of greenhouse gases, analytics trends that are going into this hard scape, concrete stuff that we see around us. I mean, if you think of it in the really big picture, this is all pretty new. Like, 100 years ago, we didn't have this kind of streetscape. It's really, we're investing a tremendous amount in serving cars, and if we can think outside the box a little bit, how we could, maybe there are some alternatives where we could inch our way.
Well, this, and it's one of the goals here, complete street ordinance and policy. And that's something we've talked about internally. That's one of those things that I desperately like to do, but it's coming across the staffing bottleneck.
Yeah.
But at complete streets, you're looking, you're not just, you know, tagging on what you just said, Madge, you know, not designing for predominant transportation, which is vehicles, for the complete range.
And I would also just warn that sometimes, while that can seem like a good idea, à la Caltrans's strips on Main Street before the city put in the bricks, came to be known not affectionately by Main Street business owners as the poop strips. So, if it isn't planned well, just leaving open area that isn't paved or bricked is not really ultimately a good plan.
Not only the poop strip, but also ankle wrenching.
Exactly. So, if it's well thought out, I agree with you, but it's got to be well done.
Absolutely.
I have a thought. Dusty, do we have anything agendized or thoughts about what we want to accomplish in terms of Revite Ed? And next meeting, are there like...
Yeah, I would like to go ahead and get a meeting scheduled for first, so probably, let's say, March, tentatively.
But what are, what items do you like, are like burning things that you're like, oh, this is what I want to tackle? Are there any, or do we just know that we need to have a meeting and kind of figure it out?
I mean, I do have some ideas, and I certainly want to run those by our city manager and get on the same page with him, but I would... But I would just say the, the general theme of, and really, I think, you know, close to, to what Revite Ed was intended, that's Revitalization and Economic Development Committee, but with the, the current situation with our local economy, I think there's an opportunity to explore matters that would support local businesses. And so I think, I think the things I'm wanting to, to focus on with that committee really could be in that realm.
The reason why I was asking is because as I was reading through this on goal number three, just looking at what's been accomplished in terms of maybe on some of the other goals, I was thinking that it seems appropriate to, to make those maybe the focal point of what Revite Ed, those sorts of things that could work on. For example, 3.2, and then number two, for example, composing economic development strategy plan, there's been no progress. Maybe that's something that Revite Ed could get involved with. And that could tie into Councilmember Stransky's concerns about, you know, we don't, what, what are we doing proactively when we hear a business in the community that might be going out of business? What is our plan for outreach, that sort of thing, to, to ensure that that sort of thing that happened with Peterson doesn't happen again? I'm just wondering if maybe that might be a place to, to start, to tackle some of those things that are part of our goals, so that Revite Ed isn't just like grasping at random things, but maybe it all ties back to the goals, too.
I also wonder if maybe that would be a good opportunity to partner with the Chamber of Commerce, especially now that they have a director and they're working on trying to find ways to be more valuable to the city and to the city's citizens. It's a great idea.
Yeah, because I think, I agree with you. What you're saying is that I've never felt, kind of like whether it's housing or something like this, we're not going to come in and just give them the medicine and fix it, but if we can remove some impediments, if on our end, if they, if the businesses come to us and say, hey, I know you can't bring customers to us, but boy, could you help or help fund or help coordinate, like, something like Wayfair Sciences, I'm just using, throwing that out there, and then we'll do X or something. And then, then I kind of feel like on our end, we're doing something. And it's, or even with, you know, I look at housing as the example, where we're not going to go build the housing, but if we could lower barriers or do something, then to the extent we can, because like I said before, when we had no money, honestly, I would just sit there and wrench my hands, go, okay, you've got all these great ideas, but then they'd all look at you, and it's kind of like going to lunch with somebody, and they're all saying, I think we'd like prime rib, but everybody's looking at you like, are you going to buy the prime rib or not? Or how are you, how are you going to get that prime rib on the table? And, and that's what I kind of see, and I'm not going to throw it at all on you per se, but what can we do on our end, or what can, what master plan can we do on the city to help, help them or remove impediments? And, and that's where I agree with you there.
I think as a business owner, I don't look to the city to, to give me the money to solve my problems. What I look to the city as, as a business owner is, is to give me sometimes a certain level of, not necessarily advice, but sometimes it can be in the form of advice, but it can be like to tell you where to look, or the right questions to ask, or where, where might I find a, a grant opportunity, or how do I go about this process? And I think that's what many people need support with from the city. It's really just the, how do I do this and, and get information, and how do I network? I was happy to hear, for example, that the chamber's talking about having mixers. Mixers seem like they're just fun little get-togethers, but in the business sector, they're critical. That networking, meeting other people that are like-minded, like-minded, and then just the things that pop up that create conversations and make connections, and then later down the road, you're like, oh, I remember that individual that had that skill set or that knowledge, and like, you have this friendship, this, you know, this a light friendship, but you've met this person, and now you feel comfortable reaching out to them. Those are things that don't really cost money, but they're, they're important factors when you're trying to run a business, and especially in a small town.
Well, right as we speak, right next door, we have a chamber event talking about business financial strategies and having several different speakers, including EDFC and Blue Zones and Nick Casarotti, who was here yesterday, basically talking about that and making those kind of connections, like, where do I go if I need advice? I don't think personally, I have, I don't know if it's a model of a, excuse me, an economic development strategy plan that's out there that a city has done. I kind of have trouble figuring out what a city would do to develop a strategy plan. Because again, to me, that's kind of what both of you were saying about, there's the private sector, you can make your zoning appropriate, you can try to encourage, you can make your, your permitting process, lower the barriers, but you can't run somebody's business, and you can't give them money to keep them afloat. But you can give them, you know.
There, there is a way to put together. I, I can think of how a city's, a strategic plan from the city could be helpful.
There's a lot of, I mean, there's a lot of strategy, a lot of models. There are, you can go from basically permitting assistance to planning services, to offering just promotional activity, you know, having an opportunity to promote their product services within city facilities or a city website, a link, to all the way to basically abatements and basically taxing, you know, deviation plans or anything like that. You can, it runs a gamut. The only thing I would say, the only thing I would caution, is that the most successful plans are homegrown, they're organic. You can't take what worked, what works for Bragg and drop it here. Different dynamics, different people, different players, different focus of energy. You have, it's, for the most successful type of operation or, or strategy, it has to be put together by the people who have the most invested in the community, because that's the, they're going to ensure success.
So I, I guess I'm not clear about how that would look, but I'm hearing you that there are some things that the city could help lead and offer that would be successful. And I do definitely think we should work with the chamber now that the chamber's getting, getting their act together, because I think they are, you know, the liaison with the, with the business community, and I really.
Very simply, a lot of cities, what they want to do is capture and bag approach. Basically, they go out and market themselves, they offer a lot of inducements, and they want to bring them in. That's, that's a very popular strategy. I'm not advocating it, but you know, that is really the top rung, where you're aggressive and you are putting money, you creating a loan program, a revolving loan fund, to basically entice development. Or work with your current business partners, and see what they need for enhancing or expanding. Yeah, there's a lot out there. That's a whole universe that I think, you know, Dusty, we're just scratching the surface of.
And I especially like what Larry was saying, too, about existing businesses that are teetering and get them before they have announced that they're leaving. Get, you know, like maybe some ongoing gatherings of the leaders in the business community that we already have that are gold for us, and they're, they're our lifeblood to keep our existing businesses in town.
Something that I was thinking of was, several years ago, when Lisa Epstein was still here running the chamber, the city had a meeting in this room of the top 10 businesses, the 10 most tax generating businesses. And it was sort of a brainstorming session on what they needed, what did they need from the city, what could the city do to help them be more successful and increase their businesses? And it was a really dynamic group of people. It was actually pretty exciting. But I wonder if we could do something where we pulled together the restaurant owners and brought them to City Hall and hosted an event and just said, what do you need? You know, are, are you, are you suffering? What could the city do? Is there anything that the city could do that could help, you know, ease your path? I was thinking about, at the very beginning of COVID, Dusty, how you worked with so many of the business owners to get outdoor seating, and you made that easy for them, and that gave them an opportunity to be able to serve food when they otherwise couldn't. But there might be something like that, where business owners are thinking about it, but they're not necessarily reaching out, and they're kind of wondering. You put them all in a room together, and you start picking their brains, maybe there's something the city could do to help out and make some of those things happen. And you could do that with the different sectors. How, how is hospitality doing? How is industry doing? How are the retailers doing? And then just see, is there some policy shift? Is there something that the city could do that could help those businesses get through this rough patch?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I don't want to keep going on, on this topic, but I just want to be very clear. The sky's the limit, what the city can do for economic development, for business retention, business enhancement, going out and, and marketing your community. I do anything and caution. And I think Sabrina's right, you have to be very clear in how you're going to use public funds for the, you know, the benefit of certain industries. It has to be equal, and it has to be tied to your either adopted plan or a strategy that has been invented through the community. The community understands that revenue that the city collects is going to go for promoting businesses that one may exceed over the, the expense of others. Just putting it out there. But if you can move on a broad front and, and understand that, there's a lot of things we can do. And if that's what we're hearing from the council tonight, you know, we're looking to it. We'll see what we can do.
I just think that the, the Revite Ed might be near a program place to start to build that, that plan of what it is we want it to look like.
Yeah, and just, and I don't want to put Sabrina on the spot, but we had a good conversation today when we did our weekly briefing about, you know, economic development is, the city can't do it all by itself. We need to identify who are the champions of this community, who are the people who, or groups and entities that want to have a stake at that table or a seat at that table and, and play, or, you know, mobilize their resources, their energies, their talent for the betterment of this community. It's, it's, it's a wide-ranging program and a commitment, and cannot be driven by everyone in, in this room, but we can definitely play a part in it.
One other, just an editorial thing, there are at least three different places where the task is essentially to review and implement the recommendations in the 2016 Willetts Main Street Corridor Enhancement Plan, which obviously is a really good goal, and I just don't know whether, because it shows up in three different places, almost verbatim, to make sure that we are all, you know, doing it in one, in one comprehensive way. That's all. It's on 3.2, 3.2, I didn't, I have notes. I, I can tell you later, but it, you know, it shows up three different places.
And I, I hate to belabor the point, and I, I know that in the past, it's been a touchy subject, because I am a Main Street business owner, but I think the fact that that appears three times in these goals should indicate the level of importance and desire for movement on that project.
Yes. I, I think I had a conversation with one of the council members on this topic. I don't have an honest, great answer for you. That is something that we need to look at, at staffing capacity and refocus some energies. And I'll, I'll be, I'll have to admit, as a planner, it does hurt that, you know, we have an excellent plan that we're not really following and looking at the implementation of it. Working with Dusty, looking, you know, at his staff and his capacity as well, we need to get out there and bring that back to the forefront.
And that could tie into economic development as well.
Yes, yes. It ties into a lot of things. That could tie into, you know, improving the Main Street corridor, especially the South End, improve some energy efficiency over there, looking at different traffic patterns, improve safety patterns, pedestrians, and make that more encouraging, a more inviting environment for businesses to relocate and survive out there.
It's more marketability. Larry?
Two things that I have seen over the years that I've been here. First of all, we need housing the most of anything that we have had, and it seems like the city, and I've, I've not been on the committees to do this, but it seems like that things are really ready to go, and then they get dropped. I mean, I've had two city managers, not the one present, but that have started with the thing about the Van Hotel. And what do you, impression do you get out of your, of the community when you drive through from the south to the north, when you look at the Van Hotel? I mean, what does that tell us? Another thing that is interesting to me, and I had not, anybody had, well, somebody pointed it out to me, is when you're driving from the south to the north, or if you're driving from the north to the south, when you enter the community, there's signs in front of coming into the city, and they're really not maintained. You know, I mean, that's, that's one of the impressions when I drive, when I come, if I'm coming here and I'm going to Fort Bragg, because that's the way I'd go to Fort Bragg, is the first thing I see is, and we can't do anything about it, is the county's way of taking care of the property that everybody sees coming into the community, and then you see a sign that is not maintained that says, welcome to Willetts, or this is Willetts. I mean, has anybody ever really looked at that? It's really not very nice. And as a council, we have the, we have the equipment and the people, and obviously, we have the people that have the knack to do these kind of things, and it's never happened. I mean, not just Brian's, but I mean for generations of people. This is my fifth or sixth city manager in the years I've been here, and that tells you that I'm over 60 anyhow, I'm telling you. Anyhow, I'm just saying that, that those are two things that really bother me, and I have been on the poor city, not engineer, the city building inspector about the Van Hotel, and I was told by one of the city managers that they weren't going to spend the money to, to work on, to get the Van Hotel to shape up. And, I mean, these are things that never came across my desk as a city council person, that they weren't going to spend the money to, to do this. Because I don't care who you are, when you drive through the town, you see that, especially the plywood that's built up where the windows are broken.
Dusty, you want to?
I mean, I, I know it's not Dusty's fault.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, we have a plan.
Well, and not only is it a, I mean, when you look through the code enforcement file for the Van Hotel, it's, it's maybe the biggest file in the office.
It's huge.
And, and you just see all the, the past incredible amount of efforts and letter writing and, and to no avail. It still sits there, and it's this iconic piece of property, it sits right in the town, and, and I think it's just one of those situations where you can get every community, community member to line up and say, yeah, please figure out what to do about that. There has been renewed effort on the, the part of the city to come up with a legitimate plan to force the owner to do the right thing by the community. And, you know, I don't want to, you know, explain exactly, you know, what it is, but...
And let me just, just say, there is legal ramifications, that's why, you know, of course.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a strategy, it's well thought out, it's involved several sets of attorneys and legal proceedings.
Right. Thank you, Brian. And there's a, there's an end game at hand, and we have the, the resources, and Brian's, you know, provided permission to dedicate staff and, and time and resources to that matter. The, the hope is that the property owner steps up and does the right thing, and if they don't, then...
There's a plan B.
There's a plan B. And, yeah.
So we, we hear you, we know that the community is aware of it. Like we saying earlier, how the city can promote economic development and promote private businesses. private businesses, equally statutes and law protects part of the property. So there comes that, that balancing point of where private interests are outweighed by the welfare of the community. And that's, we reached that point, and that's why now it triggers legal proceedings.
I would also just point out that years ago, we had a forum here with leaders from Hopland. They went through their bypass situation and they were talking about what, trying to give Willets business owners what to expect. And they had a city planner who was very active in that, in that whole revitalization of Hopland.
You're talking about Cloverdale?
Cloverdale, I'm sorry. I keep saying Hopland.
Thank you.
Cloverdale. And he was saying that they had a building similar to the Van Hotel, despite all of their efforts, which is always a derelict sort of situation. And he said, "Every town's got one." And it's good to hear that you all are working on it. I know you have been for years. I know even, you know, last year, I think there was a flurry of letters, but we're not unique in that, in that situation.
Anyhow, these are a couple of the things that, that I see. And we, as a council, it would be really nice to have, you know, the Van Hotel thing come to some kind of fruition. And then the signs that, you know, enter into town, when you come into town, do you ever look at those? How many people ever look at those?
You're talking about the "Welcome to Willets" sign?
Yeah.
You know, there's no electricity or anything to them.
Can I make a comment on that? I've been tasked with that, checking into that several times over the last several years. And unfortunately, there's no document, there's no agreement that states who is to take care of these signs. I have checked with other cities and they said that actually the clubs and organizations that have their names on that sign are the ones that are supposed to take care of that. But I mean, we have not been able to find anything that talks about the "Welcome to Willets" signs and who's to be taking care of the upkeep on those.
Do we know who owns the property that they sit on?
I think they're private property.
Well, that's what I mean.
We would have to look into that. I don't remember because I think one of them has, has been sold and...
I guess, the way I look at it, we find out who owns the property, number one, and if nothing else, get their permission and start to codify, here's the deal, and we maybe do a partnership. We allocate a certain amount of money in the budget process. This is what we'll give. And we talk with the chamber, we talk with service clubs, and we say, "This is what we're willing to do as part of our investment in 'Welcome to Willets' kind of thing, but this is your opportunity, community, and we, we put our money where our mouth is and we put some money there." But first, we have to find out who owns it so that we can at least get some sort of permission and a file started and then get everybody that signs in or signs up, you know, Rotary or the Sir Optimus or whoever. I think some of the groups that are on those signs aren't even active or existing.
They are, yeah.
And in which case, we, we see who else wants to jump on board and get permission of the property owners.
I know two years ago, three years ago, the Frontier Days approached just about it, and they were willing to take it on completely. Clean them up, repaint, do whatever needed to be done. So I know that that has come forward as well, that they were willing to put money into it.
But I think on our end, if we do the research and find out who owns them and then contact the owners and say, "Look," if nothing else on our end, that, that would be the minimal thing and say, "If John Doe, who lives in wherever or whatever, we acquire at least an easement for the sign monument and say, and say this is what we want to do." I'm not sure what other model happens in other towns.
Usually, you know, a project like that is, you know, something that's shared with chamber, Rotary, a business group, yeah, specific group or something, schools.
But I, I would provide the roadmap and then we let the community go. I think it'd be a good way to let us all coalesce as a community and a, you know, whether Will wants to jump in with Frontier Days or everybody, you know, and everybody has a chance to kind of put our best foot forward, but we kind of do it legally as opposed to, I'd hate to invest public money on somebody's private property who is eventually going to send us a letter saying, "Get your crap off our property," you know? I'd rather find out ahead of time that it's okay. And some people may just say, "Look, I own it, but if you'll hold me harmless or I'll hold you harmless," and we do some bare minimum, then, then approach the service clubs and the Frontier Days and...
Check it out.
You know? And I'm not sure whether this is a few little bit of Jim Lance, it's time to drop some sort of agreement and with the property owner and Dusty time to figure out who owns the property or, and then we go from there. I'm sure that it's on some assess or parcel who owns what.
I was just going to say the "We're all in this together" signs that popped up at the beginning of COVID were, are very nicely done and I think reflect well on the spirit of our community.
I think there's one there at the railroad tracks that somebody did and said, "Historic Willets." I'm not sure who did that, but I thought that was kind of a neat thing and that partnership, expanding on that.
It was a private individual.
I think it was the chamber.
Yeah.
That was a private individual.
That, that one was a private individual. That was the ones you were referencing was the chamber.
"We're all in it together."
Yeah. But the ones next to the railroad track was a private individual, who got praises and got backlash. Yeah, he got both. So we have kind of wandered off a little bit from the adopted goal conversation, but I do think that it, the conversation shows that we are all thinking about how, how to put the best foot forward for our city. So I would hope that all of that is integrated into our...
We're listening.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. So, and let, does anyone else have, anything else they would like to add to the conversation about the adopted goals or do we think this is a good time to move on to the capital improvement project?
I guess I have a question. Are we, do we have a schedule for revisiting these goals? Is it like every six months or what is the plan for continuing to check in on how we're doing on this?
We can do it quarterly. Okay.
I'm, I'm okay with once a, once a year in terms of checking on the goals because I feel like each time I meet with you every week, you're telling me about different elements of these goals. And then every time I receive a report from the staff, I'm always thinking about the work that's being done and how they're tying back in to the goals as well. So I don't want to create an, for me, I don't want to create an extra layer of, of work and, and of production.
My suggestion, we can do basically, one, beginning of the year, like we're doing here, special meeting, deep dive into it. Council can ask for clarifying, you know, questions, you know, how's that roadmap shaping up? How's our commitment? And then at a six-month phase, like towards June and July, when we have slower time, I can basically do a session within a normal meeting, basically just attracting where we are, the progress. And I feel, and if I feel something comes up that we accomplished a big goal or took a lot of mileage out of something, then I'll let the department heads know that in their reports or their briefs.
I, I think that's a good idea and also because it's happening here, we can come to you right now and say, "Hey, when we do that budget later in the year,"
Yeah, we've got budgets, yeah.
"Then, then we planted the seeds so that when we were approaching the budget time, then we could say, 'Hey, back in January, February, we discussed those goals or we said we'd kick that down to the budget and now can we throw that in there or whatever I think could be appropriate.'" And I agree, once a year.
But I also want to be clear. At any time the council wants clarification, either from, you know, one of the informal briefings, discussion and assessments that I provide, or if you want to put on the agenda to have, you know, aired publicly, let me know. We're not hiding behind these. We're not. We're putting them out there. We want you to be comfortable with them and you want, and I want you to have expectations from myself and then, then I repeat that or show that back to staff.
Great. Thank you. Okay, I think we can wrap that discussion up and...
Thank you. Thank you for the input. That's my man.
Item four is project prioritization. After reviewing the status of our goals, we will now review the proposed and programmed capital improvement projects and determine if the described projects are consistent with our goals.
We have brought Rob, you know, the president, as well as Scott and Andrea. Worked with them, you know, a lot of these were, you know, works in progress. We just refined them a little bit. We just want to have this opportunity before we get too far ahead to have, allow the council the opportunity to look at what we're proposing, what we have on kind of the menu of projects for the next, this construction season as we roll into 24 as well. Scott, you want to have any comments?
I think if you have any questions.
The one thing that I've been concerned about with the water, with the reservoir, is ever since I've been on the council, and this has been a couple of years ago, that Morris Dam has got smaller because of the, the tulies in the water. And it just keeps encroaching and make it smaller and smaller. So I asked a long time ago, when it was Denny and Benny that were out there, and that, some of you don't even know who Denny and Benny are, I'm just saying that it's a long ways out there. They told me that there's nothing, when they did Centennial Dam, that they made no access to running the water out of Centennial Dam into the facility that clarifies the water and sending it out to the city. So it has to go into Morris in order to be pulled out to send it into the water plant. Is that correct?
Correct.
So consequently, if you ever want to work and get the tulies out of Morris Dam, you're going to have to shut it down because you're going to dredge it or whatever you need to do in order to, to make the water run. And it's got to come out of Centennial into the water plant. And why the city fathers, and I was not on it at that particular time, believe it or not, didn't do that, I have no idea. Does anybody know?
I mean, you'd need obviously a pump station. I think the theory behind it is a gravity to Morris where you had your pumps set up initially to pump to the facility. It would be essentially like a bypass from Centennial. You'd have to create a pump system, a pipe system.
I understand, but, but all these years, and nobody has ever come up with that. I mean, has, has anything ever crossed our desk about making that happen?
Is there a concern that Morris is, I mean, are we, are we worried about the level of tulies that are building up and...
So there is technology out there that we wouldn't have to isolate a reservoir. They do it all over the place.
Right.
You know, so, you know, they, they, they're called like tulie munchers, per se. They come out with a barge, they have a grinder, they grind them up, they put them on the barge, they can haul them off. So there are alternatives. You wouldn't have to take the lake offline, I think, is, is what I'm saying.
Is that something that we should be budgeting for or something that you think needs to be done at some point in the nearer, rather than later, future?
I'm not quite a specialist. I, I would possibly defer to opinions and maybe someone that could come out and look at it and give us a suggestion.
I mean, I'm just asking because it seems like it's something you're very concerned about. Is it something that we need to be concerned about?
Well, yeah, for the simple reason that, that our lake is getting smaller and smaller and smaller.
But is that impacting water production?
Capacity?
We still, on the, on the surface, we still have the same amount. Down below, that's a different story. Could be a dredging situation more than the tulies.
Yeah. We have discussed this.
Yeah.
You know, we were just, the permitting nightmare that would entail. Once you start disturbing the bed of a water feature, that gets rather difficult. And then what do we do with the spoils? That has to be pulled off somewhere and disposed properly as well. But I think Scott's right, there are mechanos, mechanical means to basically prune, mow, harvest the tulies. But it's just finding time. It's, you know, ultimately, like Scott was saying, it's the, it's the sedimentation of the basin.
I've just, I wondered this for 25 years. And another thing that was interesting to me too is that when you go from here down across the, the bridge over here by the, where Andrea is, that whole area, the one bay of it that's made into two bays, and the one bay, as the water comes around, that school and swirls around there builds that one bay up and stops it.
Are you talking about underneath the bridge?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so consequently, we have had a time with getting, and at one time it was a very evident thing with fishing game, to be able to get in there in the summer and haul all of that sand and gravel and rock out of there so that we could have a flow into both of the bays underneath that bridge. And that hasn't come up for a lot of years, and we had a lot of water this year. And I'm wondering, did anybody look at it? Have you looked at it, Scott?
We have done it twice in the last six years, removed that gravel on the inside of the bridge.
Is that ongoing permit or is it...
I don't know.
We have to review.
Yeah.
Were we talking any commercial industry?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is something that can be done. We had to program it and get the permitting, right conditions to go and remove the sedimentation from underneath.
I mean, over the years, I know that when, it always is scary when the water goes up to that bridge, you know? You know you're definitely in a flood situation when that bridge floods as opposed to when down there closer to the rodeo grounds, seems like that's a yearly thing or kind of pools there. But there, that bridge going underneath there, I, I thought that that was kind of something you guys did every so often.
Yeah, I mean, it takes a couple of years to, to build up, to make it, you know, to where you could remove it. And otherwise, you did it annually in the last couple of years and it hadn't rained, so it didn't change.
But then we hope when we have these recent conditions, it kind of jets itself.
Yeah.
It'll be interesting to see once we get low-flow conditions later this year, what, how much sediment is back there.
Thank you, Scott, for looking at that.
Yeah, I think the condition looked pretty good before going into this season, so, yeah, we'll just assess it once.
There's some trees that are causing, there's some trees that are causing some, some issues with scouring on the south, shouldn't be on the north, on the northeast side and some along, just on the east side.
A lot of Larry's concern there with that. I'm concerned with this weather we've had that has kind of been unprecedented. We've been worried about drought for so many years that, is it, is it an opportune time to look at our bridges again structurally with this summer to see what's under there or, and see if there's any damage or anything we need to look at ahead of time?
Yeah, we, we get a bridge inspection annually.
Oh, okay.
So we did just recently get reports. And another development was that we were put on a schedule, the shortlist for grant funding, and we have, we have a grant funding number now for East Valley Bridge.
Hey!
Yeah, so the application only went in three years ago. So we finally got word and, and we'll be looking forward. I believe the allocation will come through in 2024.
Oh, okay. I just thought this has been kind of a weird year, so looking at damage. I know you guys have looked at it in the past, I just thought...
Well, actually, Rob sent some pictures of, of the scouring on East Valley after the floods subsided during the storms. And so I think that's something we should look at, you know, moving into the summer. Yes, I'm sorry, that was commercial.
The general stance from, from what we saw with that first significant storm that had the highest water levels was, water was where we hadn't seen it before in the last couple, the last 10, 15 years, just, and that came from a lot of local, local, longtime residents who just like, water's never been in the barn of the Coleman Ranch, not this early, or some, you know? So I think there are some, some hydraulic issues downstream that... So I think there are some hydraulic issues downstream that may be causing some of that. It could be internal, you know, as things continue, as vegetation continues to grow similar to what's happened at Morris, the flow restrictions are different and the water starts to go.
Rod, is comparison to our flood maps that just got approved a while back and what we saw, any surprises or anything that, I mean, were they accurate or not?
I haven't really looked that closely. We just looked at a section today that was East Valley, just outside the city limits, just where, and the water seemed to be probably at least a foot deep there during that.
But more importantly, the water stayed within the channels. And that reflected the revised firm panels, the maps, so that was good. So on that note, yes, the creek did, Bravis Creek down there by East Commercial and then through the fields. I mean, if we're going to have, if we're going to sacrifice an area, open field, rec field is probably what we want, not a residence. So that was good.
Did we get any flooding at Public Works this year?
Came to the yard.
Yeah, they got wet.
Old River.
Oh, okay.
Fifty thousand to go to the East Commercial.
But no, I recall, well, when I first started working for the city, I remember there were occasions when the parking lot flooded out there and, you know, I had tall boots and I was waiting out there with about two inches to spare. So it's not unprecedented to see flooding of that nature. I think that looking at doing some creek clearing, working with others, maybe during the summer to look at areas that have been jammed up, that is something that we should have.
Well, I'm really excited about.
Yeah, 2015 is the same on the super plan. It's just last thing out of order.
Well, that's why I'm really happy that we got CCC coming to the area.
Yeah, we have removed in the, let's say, the last seven years, twice we've been called out to Bill Creek, more or less to clear the, some of the debris blockages that built up over the years. As we get that, we get it from Brookhouse. And that's the last point. So we get stuck with the cleanup part.
At the bottom of the basin.
Yeah. But I think it would be nice to do that work during the summer, in the middle of the winter, when it's flooding and poses a challenge for.
Well, I know that community members that live along the creek there, a lot of the homeowners, they, I always get real positive when we're doing that sort of cleanup in there and clearing debris and that kind of stuff. Even if it's just something minor, people just think you're taking care of them. So, you know, obviously you can't do anything if it's an unprecedented, unworldly flood, you know, but it looks like we're being proactive and I think people have a peace of mind. Nothing freaks you out more than having waters coming up and you're like this and those.
Did the rails with trails do anything for the stream that goes underneath the trestle? I mean, when Tom Mannet was here, that was the one thing that he said to me was that when the rails to trails, they would take that whole section and make it new because it was not right. Did anything ever happen to that like that? Rod, do you know?
I'm talking about this one right down here.
No, I'm talking about down there by Smith's property.
Oh, can I say a question?
Are you referring to the bridge project?
Yeah.
Well, there was, there was work done on the impingment and then there were, well, lots planted there, but I'm not sure if you're, if you're talking about configuration.
He mentioned that if, and this is my thought, and I'm always not right with the things that I think, but anyhow, that when the rails to trails came in, that they would fix that section of the bridges to make it right for that section of it to go all the way out to the hospital. In other words, from Commercial Street out to the hospital would be cured of any of that kind of stuff. They would rebuild the rail bridge or whatever that they had to do to make it not a problem anymore.
Are you talking about channel improvement for the creek?
Yeah.
That is not in the scope of the trail project.
No, that is correct. I mean, the trail will be independent of the tracks and the existing, you know, rail bridges that are there. The pedestrian bridges that are being designed at this moment to support the trail, you know, will be outside of the banks of the creek and there's no.
Dusty, remind or Rod, the proposed bridges, would they be designed for 100-year flood vent capacity?
Correct.
So we would, the structures that would be part of the Rails to Trails project will have greater hydraulic capacity. There will be a larger opening so they can accommodate more flows without backing up, and they'll be designed correctly.
Okay.
So that's what, if anything of the Rails to Trails project were assumed management, that's what.
Yeah, I just have a question about this capital improvement project part of tonight's agenda. Are these just 2023 projects?
Twenty, twenty-two to twenty-four.
Some of them are going to overlap, some of them are, they're being proposed right now, they're in design phase, some of them are going to be constructed later this year, some of them are probably going to be stretched out into calendar year 24, so that'll be the next fiscal year.
So, but I'm kind of used to a presentation of capital improvements where it goes over several years and it's numbers, you know, how much is being allocated. Yeah, this is just sort of an interim.
This is narrative, this is.
Yeah, it's just narrative. And it's kind of preparing what we need to do to get these projects online in the next year and two, you know, year and a half or two, through 2024. So, you know, these all seem to be very.
They're all referenced in the CIP?
Yeah.
So that's where you have your financial allocation, the fund balances and scheduling. And this is basically just giving you a cut sheet of various projects that we are proposing that we're ramping up to accomplish through this construction season and probably into the fall, and some of them maybe into 24.
Okay, all right, that's what I thought.
I think this is a very exciting list and I'm anxious to see these accomplished. I'm particularly excited about solar installation and getting the blue tarks off the roof. And I'm also excited about water line replacement. And, you know, I'm also a fan of the pavement preservation. Always exciting for me to see new street surfaces.
Question, on the creekside stabilization, is that creekside drive or creekside?
Correct, at that freeway intersection coming up South Lenore off East Commercial, big right, there's this little dip in the road and it's kind of taking the sidewalk with it.
Okay.
One of us to restabilize, find out what's in there, what's caught up in it and restabilize that section.
Okay.
And this one has been listed after the local streets and roads funding for a number of years, which has haven't gotten a chance to work on it, but basically we've tasked Tam Pope or Pope Engineering with surveying the area so we better understand the expense of the repair that's needed, and then they'll scope out the project from there. So that one's in, it's, we can see, but we're just trying to get some traction on it at this point.
I believe it's been sampled.
It is.
You know, so we have the analysis.
And you said this is South Lenore?
This is on creekside, right, basically close to the intersection of South Lenore. Just beyond that intersection, there's a sunken section on the south side of the street.
Okay.
Did you have a question?
Yeah. I was just going to say that under the water on the last page, the two, addressing the brownwater issue and actually seeing it written down, planned, knowing that, you know, that we're genuinely addressing the brownwater issue was really exciting and much appreciated. And then the last comment I had is, Dusty, at the meeting, my ears perked up when you talked about many of the grants having, you know, that we're getting through the, we're finishing up some of them. And I was wondering if in an upcoming meeting, we'll be receiving an update of where we are, which grants we're still actively working on, which ones were closed out, and probably anticipating that the next thing I want to know is when will we have capacity to add more? And if we do have, if there is an interest in adding more, should we be thinking about investing in a future grant writer again? Are we at that point? Is that a need? Or are we still very much, even though our load is lightened, are we still pretty busy for this next year too? Just where are we at?
We're always busy, staying ambitious. And, you know, we are looking to, I think it's in the update, you know, Jim Robbins was a master at his job, and we're still looking to replace that position. But yeah, absolutely, especially with that position filled, we, and then also with the finance department being healthy for, I would say, the first time in my tenure here, there becomes a legitimate opportunity to up our game in the grants world and go after, especially in the CDPG world, that's where you just see a wide variety of opportunities. So things like, you know, the Main Street Plan implementation efforts, the idea behind developing an economic development plan, it looks like we might have some focus on trying to find some things that would be especially helpful to the local economy and local businesses. So, yeah, I think that's the direction we're trending in, you know, and we're wrapping up, we're closing out the Urban Forest Management Grant. We need our consultants to get on board with helping us close out the Flood Emergency Response Plan. We are on a dedicated path to wrap up three grants to support our land use element update at the end of the year. And I do want to note that, you know, as part of that effort, we're going to recognize that there's a tremendous amount of work that needs to be completed for the follow-up with the zoning code update. That has not been comprehensively reviewed since the eighties. That's an incredible task to try to pull off, and I want that to, as my recommendation, to very much be on the minds of the council. And it completely is integrated within a lot of these goals that you have in front of you tonight. And yes, we can, you know, provide a more written update beyond kind of just what I talked about, but that's about the gist of it, you know.
I guess my concern would be that I want to make sure that we don't wait till most projects have settled and are near completion before we're proactive in seeking out grants. And also I'm concerned about the fact that since COVID, there has been a flush of cash in the grant world, and I want to make sure that we're not missing out on opportunities there too.
Right, and you're right. And I would say, and I think council's heard me say this before, a lot of times the grant writing part is the easy part. It's the implementation stage. And what I heard from you, Councilmember Rodriguez, is that you don't need to wait till you're finished with it, there's, you can sort of start lining it up so that, you know, that grant application's out there and then, and that lines up with my consciousness too.
And then just to tie back into this, the capital improvement part, then the hope would be that some of those grant opportunities, then we would see on our next cycle of capital improvement plans that would maybe cover bridge or Main Street improvement or things like that, those would be programmed into the next round.
And I just want to build on that. Dusty and I, working with HR, we're looking, and I think I've communicated this to the council, we had difficulties in recruiting a replacement for Jim Robbins, and we recognize that finding the ideal grant administrator, grant writer, grant administrator, like Dusty said, it's really the backing that is difficult, that skill set. We're going to take a different approach. I was just talking to Dusty before the meeting, that sooner than later, we want to bring a proposal to you with a new job description to basically bring in another planner to the community development department. That person will kind of have shared some responsibilities on grant administration and going after grants and is assigned to specific projects. But what we have been talking about on achieving some of these goals and these aspirations that you set for us, that I see being accomplished or being knocked off that list, that checked, that box approach by having someone with a skill set where, which they can do project management, look at grants, engage the community, engage different entities and move projects forward.
I like that idea.
I'd like to note on this, it's a pretty neat project and we use the city water security in the future, the Overmire and the Centennial, political spillway. We did, Laco, we tried park to get a grant, so, and we were denied. Luckily we had a budget, we already had a budgeted, but we gave it, you know, Laco gave it a go.
More than just Laco staff did as well. And like I said, I asked them to do it almost at 11th hour and they pulled it off, unfortunately. The funding agency was looking at a different kind of projects, but, you know, that was formed the basis to move this thing, this project ahead and put it out front.
I don't think they quite understood exactly what we talked about. It's hard enough for us to explain.
Yes, yes. To a reviewing body that is composed of different individuals, different, promoting different programs and focus, but once again, it made us realize that as a project, we cannot sit on.
And in a nutshell, right now, we let everything go through Centennial, Morris, where in the future, hopefully, we'll be able to capture, we could almost have a full reservoir right now, Centennial, just by, you know, lowering and raising the gate. We put the boards in annually, usually March 1st, 15th. We have to actually lower the lake to be able to get in, to get the board in. This would be an all year round, you'd be able to control, control your levels.
And it's implorable?
Yeah. Maybe it's very, it's identical to the Brooktrails.
Oh, okay.
So we have real water savings ultimately?
Yeah, absolutely.
What was that, real water savings ultimately?
Yeah, I didn't realize you have to actually lower the lake in order to add the boards in, you can't do that until March 1st, and what if the rainy season has ended and you don't get a bunch of rain out of March 1st.
It's really April 1st, we always ask for early installation, variances and.
So with this, do you still have to apply for any permitting to lower it, or is it just you hit the switch and you don't have to ask anybody?
Yeah, correct. On the Overmire here.
Yeah, I think there's been some discussion with the dam safety folks about the threshold and what's more storage mean, what the storage means early on in the year and the ability to, if you have the abilities to lower it, if you need to, if the 10,000 year storm is coming, I think that's what, why that requirement is there. So yes, it gives you, it gives you much better control and it's much safer for the operators.
And your expectation is, construction is fall, so this would queue into next season's water?
Yeah, one thing that came out of the grant, I mean, one thing, you know, we've talked about for a while, the grant effort was defining the project a lot better and also getting prices from Overmire, and I don't call off top of the head, maybe you do. It just, it was a more reasonable cost than we expected, so it's much more cheap.
So even without a grant, it is something that we can, we can take care of and not too big a hit.
This has been set aside into the budget for several years.
Excellent.
It's especially important when we really, weather is going to get less and less predictable and we might have another horrible flood year next year, or we might have a drought for, you know. So being able to maximize our resilience and how to respond to those different conditions that we have no idea which is, which we're going to get, I think that's great.
I just wanted to add on to the grant discussion. Dusty's been dealing with the ATP grant for rail trail, and, you know, we have several transportation grants that are going, like USV1, local partnership program. transportation grants, like USB One Local Partnership Program, which is an annual contribution by the state for $200,000 and it's a match. So that just recently went up by $100,000 a year, so we can maximize, use that money to maximize our dollars for our pavement preservation project and the local partnership. So we, you know, I think with, with additional resources, we probably could go after more, but, but there is also that, as Dusty pointed out, it's the backend of grant administration and this is going on in the background at all times. We've got the Highway Bridge Program grant coming online and so there's stuff in the works in, in terms of the transportation stuff. We have been moving on Laco to help with grant administration recently because we're just, you know, the staff short, staff resources. So, you know, it's something that I definitely think there's, we could go a step further with, but, you know, with the extra resources. And then just back to the goals or the projects, I would say for, you know, in terms of my focus, the pavement preservation project is always an important one to stay on an annual basis. This year, we're going to be looking at the Bectral Road digouts and grind and pave on South Lenore and Boska Bell and putting some ramp upgrades, including pole mounts on East Valley at the crossing of South Lenore. So that's a focused project and we're trying to hit the ground running right now to get that launched for the summer. The other one is West Mendocino Drainage and we've been working with Tall Tree to do a drainage study and now we're looking at scoping that project, but I think that that became highlighted. We've known that there's been a drainage issue there for a long time, looking at, you know, the recent flooding events. I'm really excited to make some improvements there.
Is that up there by Easy Street where the cones always are?
Yeah, basically, we're looking at improvements and we were, we met with Tall Tree recently and looked at the solution of sort of splitting the drainage, going out and improving the drainage on X League and then going down and improving drainage going towards the school. So, you know, we're looking forward to that, that improvement there and getting water underground rather than on the surface. And then, you know, annual striping, looking behind, looking around town, we're a little bit behind on that and trying to make the push to get that up the door for the spring when the weather gets a little warmer and, and, you know, the conditions are more conducive to, to striping. So those are four projects, I think, right now, but, you know, as well as, as looking at the continuation of the groundwater project. And then there's, there's other projects that, you know, other projects like the railroad and the upcoming waterline that range is to get done and working with Laco to do the Water Main Project, but we're excited about the improvements.
Andrea, do city parking lots ever get programmed into the striping plan?
They do and we had discussed restriping the mall fields. I'm not sure if that's one that you were looking at, but.
I've just noticed in a couple of city parking lots around town, some of the handicap squares are looking rather faded and I just wonder when we.
We could do them out of rotation. We can have the public works crew look at the more problematic ones.
Can I ask you a question? I know that you covered this last night, but I have a question on the sinkhole. Is that, that's a storm drain issue under there, right?
Yeah, that's a storm drain issue. It's old corrugated metal pipe. It typically rocks out from, from the underbelly and.
Do we replace that with plastic nowadays or?
Yeah, HDPE corrugated pipe. So there's a small, Ken and Wynton did some investigation to see what was there. Looks like there's, there's stuff out there and so it's likely that we won't have to get into the streets and we'll, I mean, we'll be able to.
Just go bore it?
Yeah. Basically, I think that there, the current stubout comes out to the center of the sidewalk, so we're hoping.
And a question, do we, we own that storm drain underneath? Is it like an easement underneath the private property? Is that how that works?
Yeah, Rod did some investigation and it looked like it was a non-exclusive maintenance easement.
There's a non-exclusive, there's two parcels there. There's a non-exclusive easement, 15 feet on either side of the parcel line, which is right in, in that private line, so, yeah, it's not specific to the city branch. Non-exclusive means it could be used by any judge.
Oh, okay.
And that is part of the discussion with the drainage project. I think we're likely going to need to replace that, that manhole that it ties into. It would be nice to, well, it's a brick manhole. So it'd be nice to sort of eliminate the private easement portion. We were talking about solutions on that.
Do we have, I mean, just kind of, you probably don't know the answer to this, but in, in this case, it's going through somebody's driveway. Are there some of these drainages that go underneath somebody's actual house right here in town that you're aware of or they private property at that point or is that? I mean, I know there's a lot of mysteries in town with, what they did using.
Not there of anybody. The garage, yeah, there's the garage on Hawthorne. And is that a water line or storm drain?
Storm drain goes through there, you know, where the, it goes across Brookside. It goes out the back there, the greenhouses are, that runs across the field there into the, into the creek and there's the big head wall out there.
It's close to the elbow on Hawthorne. And then it goes back to the fields.
Yeah, I was just trying to imagine how some of these worked and what culpability we have.
Well, I think that's a sinkhole, a sinkhole, lumberjack style. There's a question over ownership and there's, Brian and I were talking about it last week about what happens when it goes from private into Caltrans driveway and then into private, what's the city's responsibility? And that happens, or what happens when it goes private, city, private, where do you, where do you, where do you draw the line legally? And I don't know how to answer all of this.
Okay. No, I mean.
I think whenever we can, we want to clean up those situations.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking about.
If we can eliminate that, that storm drain with this project, I think that'll be a link.
All right, thank you.
I mean, it's a swoop up, it's a heat or not, it's a. I'm kidding, it's a straight shot to the outlet, you know, it's like, you have to weigh the cost.
And I just want to say, and also as part of the pavement process, I always feel like we, we sit up here and people come to us with the, I want my street paved, so to speak, and I joke with a lot of people in the community that I'll probably never see my street paved as long as I'm on the council, but I think it's one where I like that you take a more scientific approach to what needs to happen. So when I tell people, look, bring up your concerns to engineering and maybe you have some mitigating circumstances that may inch it up a little bit more in priority than another street that you guys may not be aware of or something. Because sometimes guys like Larry may have a history that they know what's underneath there that you may not know or something that may elevate it, but I always kind of hate sitting up here and having people say, paint my street over what you've got planned.
Yeah, I'm excited for the Transportation Committee and the starting of that forum to get, dig a little deeper into that subject and, you know, I think that that'll be a good, a good place to discuss reasons why we might pick a street, one street over another.
Because I know that in a perfect world, we'd like to pave every street and call it good, but we only have a limited amount of.
No, not really.
We are now at the 8:10 timeline here and I'm starting to feel like we should wrap this up. Does any other council member have any questions about this exciting capital improvement project we're planning?
No questions, just comment that it's very comprehensive. It feels like it's a living document. It doesn't allow strip. I know that I invested in it, that the staff invested in it and I'm very appreciative.
Yeah, it's really, it's really great to see it so spelled out. I feel like this helps us answer questions from the community. What is the city doing? We can say, look, these are the, these are the plans. This is what's working and it's really exciting to see it. So thank you all for your efforts in putting this together and making it easy for even us non-techies to understand. All right, well, with that, I think we can adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everybody, for staying late tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.